Good evening and welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Select Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at seven oh three P. M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by W A C A T V and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruption of the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down for the evening. In the event of a disruption, broadcasting will continue on W A C A T V and livestreamed on Facebook. All right, first, I'll order of business, the citizens' participation. Anybody either on Zoom and/or in person, please step up to the podium. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening.
It is evening.
You want the whole introduction or just me?
Well, whatever you'd like to do, there may be some people out there, make it official, so that way people know who you are.
Good evening, Mark Nisony, one nineteen Main Street. I have all positive from three things. This town is working a lot better together, that I can, I can see with everything. From the committees, board members, to the, um, the committees, the planning board, the board, everybody's working in this town hall together. Two, the, um, tomorrow night, comprehensive plant is holding a good, a good meeting. Uh, what was the forums information that was forwarded and is going to be heard tomorrow night at the library at seven? And three, I told you it was going to be positive, that's it.
Thank you, Mark, it's always nice to start the meeting off on a positive note.
Joe, do you want to make mention that there should be a link posted now for anybody who might be on YouTube watching us but would rather be able, that there should be a link posted on our website, is that right?
Yeah, we had some technical difficulties earlier this evening, so, um, you may want to try that new link that's up on our website to watch this meeting. So, I don't have the link itself, but, uh, it should be on there.
Yeah, it should be up on the website, either directly on the website or on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see, we have five minutes to go before we do our introduction at seven ten, so I would entertain, um.
Well, considering it's not an official thing, I think we can jump in, and she's here, so we can go right into it.
That's right, all righty, well, uh, Aria Landry is our new Director of Prevention in Human Services, so, um, Aria, would you? Shut right up there. Yeah, make sure your mic is working, is it on, is the red little green light on? There you go, there you go.
The first for me, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Would you please tell us about yourself, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, it's nice to meet you all. My name's Aria Landry, I'm new Director of Prevention in Human Services. I come with nine years of experience in this field, I've been working with various populations and capacities with community-facing roles. Most recently, I was a part of the Massachusetts Youth Diversion Program in implementing a program in Worcester County to provide services to at-risk youth who are facing potential criminal involvement. And what that looks like is following like an evidence-based model to directly match services to needs, and by doing that, you can reduce overall risk. So, I was run on in October twenty twenty-one to implement that program, grow it, and eventually, um, obviously, it became successful from networking and just being a part of the community and continuing to get buy-in, which can be hard with any new program, so that was really, um, hard, but we just continued to make good connections, communication was important, build a team that could provide services, and, um, with that, I really was able to develop a program, implement it, and provide, um, services to youth that weren't being, weren't, didn't have access to services previously. Prior to that, I did community health work, so more basic social determinants of health needs connection throughout Metro West area. Um, so with all that in mind, I really have a vast knowledge of how to connect people to services and also how to implement programs in the communities as well. So, I think between all of that will help me to be successful in this position.
Nice, very good, well, welcome, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Ashland, over thirty years ago, began a court diversion program. Uh, I happened to be part of that program with Isabel Harrison many, many years ago, and we, they, the state used our, uh, format as their template for future court diversion programs in Metro West, so we're kind of proud of that, so.
Yeah.
We're happy that you follow through and, and continue, have you been in contact with the schools yet to sit down and talk with them about?
So, I actually emailed the principal today, Ashland High School, so we're going to have a meeting in early October to hopefully, um, obviously connect, but I would love to get youth diversion involved in Ashland specifically, I don't think that, um, the agency that is responsible for Middlesex County has been able to connect with the police, so that's another piece I would love to do as well, and I did meet with Chief Rossi, and we had some beginning discussions about that, too.
Nice, I'll open it up to the board. Any comments or questions you may have?
I had, I had one, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
What made you decide to come to Ashland?
So, I have never worked for a municipality before, so that was interesting to me. Um, previously, I worked in like mental health clinics, so I thought it would be a great way to collaborate across different departments and also a change of environment and perspective. Um, as I mentioned with my experience, I feel like, um, I was looking for continued professional growth and personal growth, and when I saw what this position was offering, I knew that it would be able to apply my experience, would also allow me to grow as well when it comes to more program development and strategic planning, which I wasn't able to tap into fully because I was still doing direct service work as well, so, yeah.
Great, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing what you can do.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Claudia?
Sure, welcome, um, we had the, um, opportunity to meet earlier today to talk about our holiday gift program, and I'm excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you on that, so, welcome.
Thank you, Claudia, we look forward to having your expertise as well.
Randy?
So, I don't have any questions for you, but I just wanted to say welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited you're here, I know that there's a lot of changes and things happening over at the community center, so, but, um, we have a really great team here in Ashland, so, um, we will definitely, um, welcome you with open arms and, and our team will take good care of you, so.
Thank you.
For sure, without a doubt, Catherine?
Yes, I just wanted to say this is Aria's fourth week with us, it's been a, a pleasure working with her so far, so I, um, I'm looking forward to continuing that. Um, we're, we've been working on some well-established, established programs such as the holiday program, and Claudia, thank you for pitching in today and helping us sort of brainstorm. Um, and so I just, you know, obviously, welcome, and, um, I'm super excited for all the connections that you've been making with not only staff but partners in the community, and so, yeah.
Nice.
Thank you, Catherine's been so supportive, and Michael as well, so I'm really lucky to have their support, um, as I get familiar with everything as well in addition to all the changes that we've had, so.
Yep, well, we have, we have some good, uh, resources, uh, that are out there for you, for you to use, so, you know, don't be afraid to take advantage of them.
Thank you.
Dave, uh, Dave Murray, who is, uh, School Resource Officer, I don't know if you had the opportunity to talk with him yet or meet him yet, but, uh.
Not yet, but hopefully, when I make that connection with the school as well, and we have, uh, another meeting coming up at the library that he is, was invited to, so if not there, then I'll find the time to connect with him as well.
Nice, very good, thank you. Yeah, Michael?
Yeah, just real quick, um, you know, I know typically when we introduce, uh, some of our new staff members, we would talk a little bit about the process that they went through, because I think it's important that, you know, public know, um, you know, what the process looks like. So Catherine, I didn't know if you wanted to speak a little bit to that?
Sure, so our interview process started, I believe, back in, um, May, when Kristen French had given her notice, and so, um, we received some candidates, and I, I can't remember the exact number, um, and had, um, a few interviews, and Aria came to us, and, um, it, it was a great experience, a great interview, and, and sort of, um, what sort of, um, impressed us the most is, is sort of her, um, I, I guess her sort of teamwork, and she thrives in a team environment, and so that's sort of what, what came through, and I, I think that this, uh, position within such a small team is super important, that the person is, you know, not only there to lead, but also roll up their sleeves and do the, the work alongside their team members, and so that's something that really sort of shown through during the interview, um, and that's, um, at least for me, one of the biggest reasons that I, I really felt a connection, um, with Aria, and that was sort of my deciding factor, and then obviously, I leaned on, uh, those that are within the Prevention and Human Services Department for their expertise on, um, the specific knowledge required for, for the role.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to sneak in here, I didn't get a chance to before, but Aria, welcome.
Thank you.
I had a chance to work with your predecessor on the STOP initiative a little bit, we were just getting started. Uh, so I'm looking forward to doing some more work with you on that, and hopefully some other things as you build your tenure here in Ashland, so welcome.
Yes, would love any support when it comes to the STOP grant.
I'm sure Makita will be more than happy to help in many, many ways.
Excellent.
Thank you, so you have a, you have quite the load to, to carry right now, you have a lot going on, so we appreciate you, uh, jumping in head steam and the best of luck in your, in your endeavors here with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for being here, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And continued work, okay, thank you. Uh, we're right on time, uh, our next item on the agenda is the Ashland Fishing Game request to modify the approved operating hours. And I see that, uh, Ron is here, so Ron, why don't you, uh, step up to the podium, if you would, please? And I know this is a change of hours, you want to give a little history as to why you, uh, looking for a change of hours, uh, with the activities that are going on?
Can you make sure the green light is on?
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, softball is back at the Ashland Fishing Game, we've been having two games a night, not, not every night, but multiple nights, and the problem is, the games are getting over close to ten o'clock, and our hours are ten o'clock there, so we're having stragglers a little bit after, and we're trying to get them out of there, so we're trying to avoid any problems, so we'd just like to extend it an hour.
To eleven?
To eleven.
Okay.
So, and we're also getting a lot of requests and people reaching out to find out about corporate breakfasts and brunches, and we're trying to open, we want to, we have a one o'clock close license in the bar. Opens at twelve, we'd like to open at eight, and leave that to one, and open the bar, have it be able to open the bar at the pavilion at eight, and close it at eleven.
Eight in the morning to eleven at night?
Correct, and that's, if there's an event going on, that's not going to be every day or anything like that.
Okay.
But we, we definitely need the extra hours.
For the, for the softball season?
The softball's huge, that's happening, we're just noticing that happening, we don't want to have that problem.
Yeah.
And we haven't experienced the stuff yet, because we haven't been able to tell anybody they can use the place early, because we don't have the hours. So, we're actually losing some revenue that, that I think we could get, too, so.
Okay.
There's not many places that you can do that, and.
Yep.
We'd like to be one of them if we could.
So when does the frostbite league, uh, end?
I gotta be honest with you, Joe, I'm not real sure with that, and that's not going to, that's another thing, that's when softball's done, that's not going to be out late at night, and we shut the pavilion down, because if stuff freezes out there, we can't.
Yep.
So it's not going to be all winter long or anything, but we definitely need our hours extended, we'd like to get eight in the morning to eleven at night in the pavilion, eight in the morning until our one o'clock, the, the closing time doesn't change for the bar.
That's seven days a week?
Yeah, just to cover it, just so we're covered.
May have a problem with that on Sunday.
So it looks on Sunday like it's ten A. M.
Can't serve liquor until ten, we know that, that's, that's A B C, that's, that's with the state. Eight o'clock the rest of the week.
Yep.
In the morning, but ten o'clock on Sunday, and we do know that.
Okay.
That would not happen before then.
Well, it's, it's nice to hear you're having that problem, that people want to be using your place.
This is why we're here, we're trying to, it's, it's, and you guys have been a big part of it, you know, rolling with us, and I think a lot of this corporate stuff is coming from these parties that we've had, that all these people have showed up and see the facility we got and start going, you guys should start checking into that place.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that's what's happening here, so.
Okay.
You guys have been a big part of helping, helping us.
Monitoring it the right way, you know, you're stopping.
That's why we're here to try and make sure we don't get ourselves in any trouble.
Uh, we appreciate that, we appreciate that, we'll open up, uh, any questions or comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I did, I do have one question, so as far as like the eight A. M. start, um, how, how, like, what, what kind of frequency do you, are you getting requests for that?
We've get, we've got the phone calls, we haven't even tried to line them up yet.
Okay.
Because we just tell them we're not available to do that yet. Now we'll be able to say, yep, we can do it, you know, Sunday after ten o'clock, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, we'll have that option, we don't have that now, so, that's what we're looking to gain.
Do you, do you think during the week, corporate stuff, we'll be looking to have alcohol served at eight A. M.?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not huge, you're talking mimosas and Bloody Marys, and nobody's going to be down there.
No, 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 I'm just, okay.
Yeah.
No shots. Oh, you never know.
Yeah, well.
We won't go there.
We are.
Ooh.
Our bartenders, bartenders are pretty schooled at being careful, so.
That's it, exactly. Okay, uh, any other comments or concerns?
No, I moved that we update the hours for Ashland Fishing Game for the building clubhouse Monday through Saturday from eight A. M. to one A. M., and Sundays from ten A. M. to one A. M., and the pavilion from eight A. M. to eleven P. M., Monday through Saturday, and Sundays from ten A. M. to eleven P. M.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
I.
That's five zero, congratulations.
Thank you very much, as always, you've guys helped us a ton, and we appreciate it very much.
Now, now you can advertise, go get them.
Thank you very much.
You have a big event coming up in a couple weeks, right?
Yeah.
This weekend?
Yeah, this weekend, this Saturday, this Sat-, right?
Fall Fest.
Fall Fest, right?
Fall Fest, Fishing Game, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Well, that's one less thing I have to put up on my board report. Yeah, there you go, all right, well, they're a good group of people, and they're, they're very, they're very concerned and self-motivating, which is great. Uh, all the new business, uh, special town meeting warrant articles are due by Sa- Saturday, September twenty-seventh, and I'll turn this over to Catherine, because I know that, uh, you're leading this, this brigade.
Um, so really no updates there, we're just following the special town meeting, uh, guidance, which, uh, all articles are due to me by September twenty-seventh, and then, um, the warrant will come to you, uh, on October fifteenth to vote on closing, so those are sort of the next steps.
Michael, anything else you want to add to that, we good?
Yeah, no, I, just a, a couple of things, I think, um, first of all, we're anticipating, um, just looking at some of the Community Preservation Committee agendas, uh, potentially, you know, a number of CPC items coming through, um, and then there's also a citizen's petition that, um, is, I'll just say kind of in circulation or, or making the rounds, um, and I think, you know, some board members might have some questions and inquiries related to that, so, uh, I did have legal counsel take a look at that, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll be able to have some more information about, you know, legal counsel's take on it, uh, once we have a fuller discussion about the warrant and the warrant articles.
Okay, thank you, any, any other que-, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wondered, is, is the, the current warrant up on the website someplace, so that you could see what's there so far? No?
No, no.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it would be helpful to kind of advertise it in, in advance without, I wouldn't mean to confuse people by it, but just for them to be able to see what, you know, where it stands right now, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, you know, once, I know Catherine is working on a draft of it, you know, with the language, et cetera, so I do think, um, at, at some point before the, um, you know, obviously before town meeting itself, uh, that we would have that warrant up there. Um, and typically, what we do, Claudia, is, is it goes through a couple of iterations, or it, I guess you could say, stages of development, so we would, usually, we put the warrant articles themselves, or what we have in terms of warrant articles, online, uh, about four weeks before town meeting, and then as, like, the FinCom has their meetings and develops recommendations for each of the articles, you know, they'll put those together, and usually the last piece is drafting the motions, because that's where some of the details that are still in flux, you know, in some cases, up to a town meeting, some of those details could be in flux, that's usually the last piece.
Okay, so four weeks at a time, you get your first draft up approximately?
Yeah, that's generally.
Yeah, that's good, I, I mean, I understand there's a lot of pieces, right, that kind of change, and then getting the motions ready and all of that, so.
So, just to follow up on that, two things, so our next meeting is only four weeks before town meeting.
Right.
So it'll have to definitely be done before that, because we'll have to get it at least on the Friday, the draft, so that we can review it, and then we have this citizens' participate, this citizens' petition that's going around, as Michael talked about, and they've asked to come and potentially speak to us about it, so that'll, because we're not meeting on the first Wednesday in October because of the Jewish holiday, we're going to want to invite them to that meeting to at least tell us what they're thinking and why, I would hope.
And then just also, just to, to follow up on that, so we won't see, so if we're voting to close the warrant, are we voting to close the warrant on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
So that'll be our first pass at the warrant this year?
Yes.
Because usually we review it a couple of times before we.
And then two weeks later, right, so because of the Jewish holiday, we're only meeting once in October, which.
Unless we.
Unless we try to do a meeting just for some, one or two things.
Yeah. And we may have to, with, that's, that's the deal with the warrant, we may have to. Um, if I may make another suggestion, and, you know, sometimes this is what happens, actually, a lot of times, this is what happens, uh, we do, you know, like to schedule the board closing, uh, and posting the warrant four weeks out, but typically, what does happen is that it happens, uh, you know, more like two weeks out. Um, so we could certainly adjust the schedule, we just need to make sure that, um, it does, the board does vote on that two weeks ahead of town meeting, because that is the required timeframe, there has to be at least two weeks for a special.
Yeah. Thank you, Michael. All right, we good with that? That explanation is good for everybody? Okay, all righty, good. Uh, Michael, I'm going to turn it back over to you again, um, review of the scoring of the project matrix, uh, you were able to, uh, provide us that information, and so, uh, I'll turn it over to you, or Catherine, wh- whoever wants to, uh.
No, I, I can go, I can go ahead and, and speak to it, um, just, I, I did get it later than our established deadline, and even if I had gotten it to you by Friday at eleven, I think it would have been very, very difficult to ask you to score all of those projects, uh, within the matrix uh, by tonight to have a discussion. the matrix by tonight to have a discussion. But I did want to put it on the agenda just to see if you had any questions that you, at this point in time. I think I'd mentioned in my email that I would be able to meet with you on an individual basis. I plan on meeting with you individually anyway, you know, just for the purposes of general communication. And this is certainly something that we could, we could talk about during those meetings. But yeah, just wanted to put it on the agenda in case anybody had any questions tonight.
I'll open it up to the board. Any, any concerns or questions regarding what the matrix outline that was provided to us? Makina, anything?
Not, not yet, Joe. I haven't really had a chance to see.
Yeah, I haven't read it yet.
So I can't really.
Okay.
I, I would say the same. I, I looked at it for a little bit, but not in enough detail to be able to ask any intelligent questions right now. So.
I, you know, I just didn't look at it real thoroughly at this point, but it did strike me that, you know, I can't remember, I, one of the, one of your, one of your projects that I thought, oh gee, before I would really know how to score that, I, I'd wanna know how much money we're talking about. That in some instances, that would be such an overwhelming factor. And I don't know, maybe the way, you know, the way you've weighted things, maybe that financial piece would be enough to, to be, you know, to kind of take a project out of the picture. You know what I'm saying? I felt like, geez, sometimes, sometimes these things are so interconnected that it's hard to maybe isolate them. But again, I mean, I haven't played with it yet, but the thing that just really struck me, and it might have been the valen, it might have just been the, I don't know, I don't know which one it was that I pulled out. But in any case, just that the financial aspects would definitely impact how I would feel about it. So again, I wasn't sure how the weighting would work with that and whether or not that would be enough to take it, take it off the plate because.
Yeah, just, just a couple of thoughts in response to that, Claudia. I'll, I'll have to look at our notes because I know we talked about just kind of, you know, the different criteria that the boards would score and the staff would score. And I'll have to remember, that's coming to mind right now. And I don't know if I made any kind of distinction on the spreadsheet that ultimately got sent to you. That's number one. But number two, I think in a lot of the cases on those projects that you're seeing, we don't necessarily have explicit or detailed financial information. And so part of the work is actually the exploration of that. You know, the exploration of the financial factors. So it's a good point that you make and maybe I can, I can kind of think of a way to reframe it a little bit. Because if, if part of the work, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if, if you're looking at it and you think there's a dollar amount to it, but I'm thinking, well, part of the work is to actually figure out what that dollar amount is, maybe I just need to make that more clear.
Yeah, or maybe there's even a range, right? I mean, I, I think, one of them, I think is the old police station, right? So, you know, is there, maybe is there a maximum? I'd be interested in doing it if we had X number of funds and there was a ma- maximum amount that we would spend to do so would be this or, I, I don't know. I just feel like the financial piece could be significant.
Great.
And then just a question. So in our packet, there's a scoring for one of the projects? Is that an example or is that your input for that particular project?
I believe, so it is an example, well, there is the template, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I just used it as, that's, those are my thoughts.
For that particular project?
Yes, correct.
Okay, got it. You referring to the? Yeah, the Pritchard's. Yeah. I just printed it. I just wanted to make sure that I got it.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. But Claudia, I think it's a good, a nice idea about putting a tent, some value figure to this, just to see what we're looking at.
In some instances, that might not matter.
Right.
It might work. I mean, I guess nothing's perfect.
No, but I think that it's a key part of the decision-making process. So like even a, a range or something or some clarification would be helpful, I think.
If you're looking at a $6 million project compared to a $50,000 project, I mean, that's, you know, that's dramatic, significant, absolutely. So.
Well, but, and part of that is also, as you look at some of these projects, there could be grants down the line that either we're not aware of or so that could financially impact them, right? Or we could make decisions about something and go, okay, but to do this, we're gonna have to apply for certain kind of funding and we're not gonna do it until we get that funding. That's all part of the decision-making and the discussion.
And, you know, the potential land purchases, there may be some grants already there that may, that may have a, a sunset date on these things. So, you know, we have to be aware of those as well.
Maybe it's a two-step process almost, right? Where you, you rate things based on what's important to the community and some of these other factors. And then, you know, so it's a nice to have, nice to do, nice to, but then, then there's reality strikes and these are, I, I don't know, because then maybe we don't have to figure out the financial end of it until we see how important it is. I don't know, just an idea.
And, and the other thing that I think is now, you know, we're wrapping up the comprehensive plan. So how do some of these projects tie into, if at all, to the comprehensive plan? And if they, we haven't gone down the road on some of these projects and we're not seeing them in the comprehensive plan, do we reevaluate? I don't know.
Well, that's interesting. Good point.
Right? We've just spent two and a half years developing a comprehensive plan, asking the community what they think is important and then what they want to see.
Yep.
So as we're determining, as we're looking at some of these projects, it's like, okay, do we need to take a step back from these projects? And I mean, I know that's a pain in the butt, especially if we spent any money or any, any effort on it. But we just spent two and a half years working on a comprehensive plan that we have said is gonna be our flexible roadmap for what we're gonna be working on moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to take both, both sets and see how they meld together and move forward from that.
Yep. Well, I'll take your expertise and, and Brandy's expertise and, and Claudia's and, you know.
Well, I would hope you all, I would, I mean, my, my expectation is that everyone takes the time. I mean, it's a big, the, the draft is a large document, but it's important that not only all of us, but anyone who's elected or anyone in town looks at that comprehensive plan. Because I think as we start talking about budgets for future years, that's gonna be something we have to look at as well.
Not a dust collector like years past.
Want to make sure it's something we use.
Yeah, it, it's, I, I think everybody's intention on the comp plan is to make sure that it's implemented. I, I don't think anybody objectively can kind of look at what we've been doing over the last 10 years and think any plan sits on the shelf, right?
Right.
You'll, on to, you know, the, the point that you make is, was actually kind of running through my mind is, I was, I was putting this together. And a lot of those strategies that you see, or a lot of the, the list, I guess you could see, corresponds, if not specifically with one of the strategies in the comprehensive plan, certainly fits within like the goals and the theme. So, so yes, point well taken.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you, Michael. Okay. Next on our agenda is review and discuss the open meeting law violation related to the January 17th, 2024 executive session minutes. Okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Comment verse on that one? So, yes, so we did receive correspondence earlier this week, just that, that we were found in violation of the open meeting law in relation to that specific executive session. This was a complaint that was brought to, brought to the, the office by, by Stephen Morgan. The specific complaint was that the documents that we used in support of the minutes were not, or in support of the meeting were not listed on the minutes. So I just want to make a very, very clear distinction that the board and our office provided those minutes. They were accompanying, you know, tho- those doc, excuse me, those documents were accompanying the minutes that we submitted and that are a part of the record. It's just, we missed the detail of actually including the list of that document, those documents on the minutes themselves. So certainly something that we need to work on and do better in are those little small details. Because they, I don't think they impacted the transparency aspect of what we were trying to do. But nevertheless, it was a technical detail that, that we did not adhere to.
Okay. So the action that we need to take tonight is to?
Nothing. We don't need to do anything.
Because we already, we already responded to it.
Right. The only thing we need to do is say we're gonna do better about making sure that when we submit our meeting notes, it has all the detail attached to it.
It's part of, it's part of the background material. Yeah.
And the only other thing I would add, just, you know, as sort of our process, I know sometimes when we have executive session, we kind, we, like, you know, we don't release the minutes until af- you know, after the issue is resolved and, and it's, you know, a, a public discussion. You know, we should have some sort of process in place for tracking all those.
Right. I, I would say that if we know that we're not gonna have an executive session meeting in that quarter, that we schedule one for 15 minutes to go back and review any exec mission, any exec minutes that we've had, right? So like this, this quarter, we've had at least one exec session. So we're gonna want to make sure that in the next 30 or 60 days, we schedule another exec session to review those minutes.
Right.
And the same, I, I don't know, I think we had one maybe in the second quarter as well. So on a quarterly basis, we should go back, look if we've had an exec session and make sure we have another exec session to review minutes and make sure any documents associated with it have been put together and available.
And that's also.
That's my recommendation.
Right. And that also comes to the fact that whatever we're discussing in the executive session, if it has to do with land acquisitions or anything like that, that may take some time till that to happen.
Right. But at least we've reviewed what we've talked about.
Correct.
And we can either actively say, you know what, we can't release them yet, but at least we know they're available.
Right.
And the documentation associated with it's available.
Everything's up to date.
So that when we go to release it, they've been approved once we can release them.
Yep. That makes sense. Brandy, you good? And, and anybody else? We're good?
I would just want to add one thing in reading the letter. Basically, it says we're in violation because they've brought this to our attention before and we still haven't been good at doing it. So it's not like we maliciously didn't do it or it's, it's sometimes hard to get those details together, but we just need to be better moving forward.
Yep, absolutely. Appreciate that. Okay. Next on our agenda on the old new business is update on the paving management report and paving projects. Mr. Michael?
Yes. So I think I did update the board that we were in the process of doing the pavement manage, a pavement management plan. And so I did get a hard copy of that report. And I know folks at the Department of Public Works, there were a couple of things that they have asked the vendor to go back and clarify or look at. And so once that has been resolved and completed, I can submit basically a copy, an electronic copy of that for you to look at. And, you know, essentially it is really a, a reference library for all of our roads in town, both, you know, the major arterial roads as well as the neighborhood roads. And a condition assessment of each one that was conducted by the particular vendor, literally, I think I mentioned this before, or like by driving around in like a specialized vehicle. So it's nice to see it all put together. And then from there we can, you know, talk about what, you know, what roads need to get paved. And just as a reminder, what we have done historically is do this every two years. So what we do is assemble or collect two years of, of chapter 90 money, which is state aid to municipalities to do paving projects. And we do that in order to get more bang for our buck, essentially when we go out to bid. So, so we did a whole round of paving this, this past year. And so we'll be looking at doing some more paving in a couple of years.
Michael, will we, can we get a copy of that report so we can review it? And did you send it out already?
I'm sorry. I thought I said that earlier. Just, you know, after DPW has their revisions put in.
Okay. I, I mean, I think you said that I just wanted to clarify it to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was gonna.
What's the timing and expectation for those revisions being put in? So when we expect to see it in our inbox?
A couple of weeks. There weren't that, there weren't that many.
Okay.
I was gonna suggest too, that maybe it get posted on the website so people could look up and, and, you know, see how their street is rated. I know that some people think their streets need to be done. So I don't know if it would give them hope if they could say that their street was.
Or not.
I'm with Mark tonight. I'm gonna be optimistic.
Matt, Matt will get to you in 22 years.
Yeah. And then the other thing I, I had mentioned, I think, an email to you and Beth, just, I think when there's roadwork in town, it would be great if Jordan was putting that out on Instagram and other social media. You know, I know that it's, I know that, excuse me, the Elliott Street work's been going on for a long time. Actually, it seems like it's simmered down now. But just lots of times you're interested. I know that we've had some work over on the House Street Bridge. I think we had, we had barriers up there for about a year. And then all of a sudden, one day they, they took them down. And there's just these two little strips of, of, that were freshly paved. And it's like, well, what, what have they been doing for two years?
Yeah.
Or one year. I'm sorry, I am exaggerating. It was one year.
It felt like two.
So anyways, but in general, when people are driving around town, I think it, it's helpful to know and maybe, you know, what's going on or where they might want to avoid and, and when, when possible.
Agreed, Claudia. We, we do, we do try to keep up with it, but certainly we don't get all of them for a variety of reasons. And yeah, I think we can certainly.
A few surprises till we understand that.
Oh, yeah, there, there's a couple of, yeah, House Street was a bit of a surprise for everybody, for sure.
Sorry for that late call.
But it's not even that one. It's the fact that the barriers were up for a year. I mean, that was unrelated, I think. And then all of a sudden, they spent a day taking them down. And then, then all of a sudden, a couple of weeks after that, there's this night work going on, which was pretty loud, I might add.
It certainly was.
It actually woke me up. It was, they were so loud and.
You thought it was loud?
Well.
Totally mackerel.
I'm sure it was very loud at your house.
It was, it was, it was interesting. Jackhammering at 9:30 at night is not pleasant.
It was like 1 a.m. when I.
No, no. My phone was loud that night too, from a number of phone calls.
Like, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make that call.
No, Joe, Joe, it, please, please do make that call. And, you know, you were not the only one.
Oh, I'm.
Not the only one.
I bet I wasn't. But anyway, it got resolved and that's, and that's a good thing. So. All right. I, I can tell you that the Road Traffic Study Committee, once, once paving gets done, within two weeks, we get a letter from a resident on the newly paved road that cars are flying up and down the roadway, which is, no, you can't win. They complain about the roads being, you know, in bad shape, bad form. You take care of it and now we have speeders. That's, I guess, you know, give or take, right? Right? All right. Well, under that paving, okay. 2025 Boston Regional NPO Municipal Election, discussed supporting the nomination of Mayor Charlie Siski to that position. I know, Yolanda, you gonna check with the town of Natick?
Yeah. And I still haven't heard anything. And as I'm reading this letter, part of me wants to say no, only because of how he addressed it. It says, hello, gentlemen. I'm like, no, know your audience, but.
First, it wasn't, it wasn't Charlie. You just wanted to make sure.
No, no, no. I know it wasn't Charlie. I, I have not had the opportunity to follow up with Natick. We are not having a Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting until the 24th of September. And I think they need to have nominations by October 6th. So because we're not having a meeting.
Right.
So the thing is, Framingham can be nominated and Natick can also be nominated. And then there can be an election.
Be an election.
So what I would say is we can go ahead and certainly sign nomination papers for Charlie. And then if we have to, if there is another community that runs, then I would suggest at our October 15th meeting. And then if we have to, if there is another community that runs, then I would suggest at our October 15th meeting that we have a discussion about the candidates and make a decision. And then as our representative to the Metro, to the MAPC, the Fall Council Meeting is happening like the 23rd of October. So whatever, if, if someone else does decide to run against Charlie, I, well, against the town of Framing, the city of Framingham, then at our meeting on the 15th, we can have a discussion about who we, who Ashton wants to support. And then I can take that vote to the Fall Council Meeting in October.
In October. Okay.
So I would say, you know, support the nomination. So I, I move that we, as the Ashland Select Board, support the nomination of Charlie Sisitski and Framingham for the MPO seat.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I, I just want to ask a question. So once we, you know, vote on this nomination, then do we notify the town of Framingham or what?
Yeah. So what we would do is we would have to let Framingham know that we support Charlie's nomination. They have, I don't know how many, they have to have like three or four other towns nominate him, nominate Framingham, and then.
In a, in a district.
In our district.
Right.
And then if there's someone else does decide to run.
Right.
The election, the official election happens in, at the MAPC Winter Fall Council Meeting. But we as a select board would then have to officially vote who would we support Framingham.
I understand. Well, just to the point of when we respond to them, I would like it to somewhere state in that letter that this was addressed to.
Yeah, I think so too. I think we need to say that how this, how this was addressed was not.
When I read it, I said, oh, boy. The first thing, the first thing in my mind was I'm going to hear about this letter.
Yeah.
And you were correct.
And I was.
So, so if, if I may, just because I can certainly understand where everybody's coming from, but the email that you're reading, it was actually sent from Mr. Tassino in Framingham to myself and other town, other town managers slash town administrators.
Who are all men.
Who were, who happened to be all.
It's 2025. We don't have to use that anymore. No matter what. I mean, come on.
Hello, town managers. Hello.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not going to win this with us, Michael.
Are you saying I'm not a gentleman?
I'm keeping as generic as possible, saying, hey, you.
I would say, once we vote, if, Michael, if you were the one to deliver the message, just let them know that we were.
That a majority of your board was not happy with these salutations.
Three fourths.
Gentleman is old school.
Four fifths. I'm sorry. Four fifths. Oh, no. I read that and said, yep. This will be a 10 minute discussion.
Okay. So I made a second.
Yeah. Okay. So all those in favor of supporting Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you. And Michael, you'll just send along the, the comments about proper titles or generic titles.
Yes.
Self-awareness. There you go. There you go. That works for me. Okay. Next on the agenda is update of the public safety building solar and geothermal rebates and credit that total $145,000. Last week I got a call from Bill Nagel, who was a OEM of the project for the public safety building. Bill was excited and I could tell just by the way he was talking on the phone that he had some good news for us. And the rebates that came through the federal portion of this so- solar panel and geothermal aspect of it came back. And the town should be getting a check hopefully by the end of this week or possibly next week for $145,000 that went as rebates for the solar panel and the geothermal aspect for a green building. So Ashland was the first public safety building to be fully green in, in, in the state. So we are the model for it. And as a matter of fact, the town of Orleans, I spoke with their town manager and their building committee chair regarding Vertex as being their, one of their individuals that's looking to build a fire station. And I invited them up to take a look at the building because sometimes it's better to see it than just hear about it. So they'll, they'll be scheduling some sort of media, scheduled visitation with Chief Roby and Chief Rossi within the next week or two. Which is nice. So, you know, we were under budget for the building and we get this back. So hopefully the people will appreciate the effort that was done.
So just a question, because I know the Mendez Building got a rebate as well. And I thought it was Mendez and public safety. So is this over and above that?
That, this is just for the public safety building.
Okay.
Yep. This is just, and that's the way, that's the way it was presented by Bill. So I mean, I, you know, he's.
Because the amount that we received for, for the two schools, the tax credit, I believe it was, was over $3 million for the, the, the school. And then for the public safety building. Was over, I think it was about 3.2 million dollars.
This is the federal aspect of it. Total difference.
Well, the other one was federal too.
Yeah, the other one was federal.
The other, the one that we already received back a couple of months ago. So this is a completely different.
Completely different.
Credit slash rebate slash something.
So I wonder if we're going to get something from, for the school based on that, however, whatever pipeline this came down.
Oh, that's a good question.
Oh, is there another one that we're going to get more?
I don't know.
No, that would be nice.
Cool. Yeah.
It would be nice. So the taxpayers will be happy.
So, so to that point, Michael, so how is this $145,000 being applied?
I believe this is under the same program as the Mendez rebate. So we would need to direct it towards costs that we've incurred for the project. So I do know with Mendez, the majority of that 3 million is going to go towards offsetting the debt exclusion costs. Part of it, I believe 250,000 is going to be used by the school department. Because if you remember a couple of years ago, you know, at the two, the school department used 250,000 of their budget to go ahead and, and do what needed to be done with the school. And we started looking at doing some value engineering because of cost increases, et cetera. So we would be looking at offsetting the borrowing costs, the debt exclusion piece associated with the public safety building.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's five zero. Congratulations, everybody. Moving right along. Okay. Mr. Michael. Town managers report.
Yeah, I had a few things just that, that you didn't see listed on the agenda, but number one, I think when Aria was here, there was a, you know, a brief discussion about the holiday program. I will say just because we've had some transitions at the, within the Human Services Department, I was really concerned about being able to move forward with the holiday program as, as we typically have done or historically have done. So, you know, kudos to Catherine, Aria, Claudia. Who else did you work with, Catherine?
Our intern, our prevention and, our prevention and human services intern, and then Susan Roby as well.
Yeah. Just thank all of you for, for stepping up and, and being dedicated to make sure that that works. I know that's a, an important part of our community. The community looks forward to it. And so I'm glad we're going to be able to continue that. So thank you. Next is just a reminder, we do have a borrowing in to replace or basically refund a ban, another short term borrowing that we had that is, will be expiring in October. We had originally anticipated doing a, a very brief select board meeting as potentially part of the tri board meeting, which was originally scheduled on September 30th to authorize, you know, whatever documents needed to happen. So a couple of things have, I have basically put that in flux. So first of all, we need to change the tri board meeting, which we were looking at a date in early October. But also S and P informed us yesterday when they were supposed to give us our rating that they really wanted to have final audits from our external auditor before they issued that rating. And unfortunately, our fin- our final audit has not been completed. Not because of anything that we're lax in, but just there's been so much flux in the accounting and auditing world, or municipal accounting and auditing world that, that they were having a hard time keeping up. So I did talk to the principal at at our auditors today, just to ensure that we would be getting that in time, those final audits. And he, he assured me that, that they would. So just to give you a heads up on that.
Mike, how does that affect the, the potential rate, ratings that we have if we're kind of behind on getting that done?
It shouldn't, it, it shouldn't at all. I will have to say that when we had our call with Standard and Poor's, our auditors who were also part of the call made it very, very clear to Standard and Poor's that the reason that the final audits were not completed had nothing to do with anybody on the town of Ashland's part. But it was, it was on their end. And so I believe that Standard and Poor's heard that, heard that loud and clear.
Okay. I know the feds just lowered their interest rates. So hopefully that would help us in the long run.
So, so just so I can, just to verify and to verbalize, so the, right now, we're waiting for the new rating until we hear from the audit. And ideally, we're going to wait for that rating until we do the new borrowing. Is that what I'm understanding?
So Yolanda, when we go out and do a borrowing, we have to get issued a rating from Standard and Poor's.
Okay.
Comes first.
Okay. That's what I, I just wanted to verify. Right. So actually, this slight delay could be to our benefit because the interest rates, as Joe said, have just been dropped. So potentially we could get a better interest rate than what we were expecting. We could potentially.
Could. It might all work out.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Always nice to have that in our back pocket.
Yeah, that, it did lower, you know, the Fed did lower the, their rates by 25 basis points today. So. And it also indicated that, you know, future ones were forthcoming. So.
So Michael, just a quick question. Are we going to need to, to do that at the tri board meeting with the new dates? Or are we looking to schedule something else before the 15th?
Definitely before the 15th. And if we can't do it at the tri board, like if the timing doesn't work out, we will have to schedule it, you know, a brief meeting. Most of you, I think, recall what it's like to, you know, to go through one of these bands, you know, you do, it can be a brief meeting. It's not like the full bonds where you have to read all of the QSO numbers and everything. Which, you know, can take a long time.
We had some good ones there.
Yeah, we had some real good ones. Get ready to, get ready to read, Claudia. Thank you, Michael. Anything else, my friend?
Oh, gosh. Yes. No, just on the tri board meeting. You know, we did put a doodle poll out looking at the dates of October 6th or 7th. And we'll be following along with that and hopefully we'll be scheduling that shortly. And then finally, I do have West Nile virus on the agenda. No change in the number of people who have been confirmed as having West Nile virus. We're still at four, but Ashland is still listed, I believe, last I checked, as in the high risk category.
Thank you. So we, we haven't had any victims, but we're still in that, that category of high risk. And is that because we're next to Framingham where they've had issues?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's the proximity. I, I think, I don't know the exact criteria that they utilize. But just looking at what has been publicized, I would say both the, the criteria, well, the proximity of where a human cases combined with the proximity to cases where they've noted West Nile virus and mosquitoes.
Any comments or questions with respect to the West Nile virus and where we stand with that? We're good? Okay. Anything else, Michael? Are we good?
No. Catherine, did you have anything that you?
No.
Okay. No.
Wow. Oh, wow. I'm not going to say anything.
Don't say anything.
Don't say anything. But I will entertain going board reports.
Okay.
There's nothing. There, there's nothing.
Well, just that we got the email from Rob with.
Right. But I haven't responded yet. So. And I made a new folder for myself and I, and it's, and it's listed as select board procedures. Responding to emails sent to the select board. Would unanimously agree to the following procedure dealing with emails. Vote was five zero, September 3rd. The presiding chair will respond to incoming emails and will share the response with the board in the following meeting packet. This matter can be placed on the standing agenda item or in place or either at item under old new business or after consent agenda. So that's right here. Anything I get, we'll go in there and we'll, won't lose anything. Okay? So we're good. All righty. So with that, I will entertain board reports at this time.
Okay. So as I mentioned already, Metro West Regional Collaborative is having our next meeting on Thursday, September 25th from eight to nine 30. It's a virtual meeting if you want to attend via Zoom. And then on 10 9, the Mass Municipal Association is having a leadership session, session. And it's going to be on finance. It's in person. It's happening in Boylston. So it's a little bit of a ride. But they're going to be talking about different financing, finance, you know, ways that we can finance different things. I was on an exec board presentation where they had looked at Prop 2 and 1/2. And not removing 2 and 1/2, but how can we work with the state to see if there's other ways to get funds back to our cities and towns? So as I get more information, I will share that as we start looking at our finances for the next year. And then this is still a little further out. This is more of a fun thing. If you enjoy Halloween, the Haunt is coming back to the Metro West YMCA. There's going to be two weekends of performances. Slightly different format this year. So performances are every hour on the hour. And the circus is, the circus slash carnival is coming to Deadwoodville. So you can check out the Haunt, Hopkinson Center for the Arts and the Metro West YMCA are the recipients of the funds. It's a fundraiser for both of those organizations. So it should be a lot of fun. We have some professional circus performers that are coming and participating. So it should be, it should be fun. So again, the performance dates are 17th, 18th and 19th. And there's also a kid friendly version on Sunday afternoons on both the 19th and the 26th, I think it is. But check out the Haunt, Hopkinson Center for the Arts and should be a fun time. The tickets are available now. So you can go online and order those tickets. We had been looking at possibly doing a Halloween performance, but a number of the people that were performing are not available. So it's just the two weekends, but not Halloween. So you can come a weekend before, get in the Halloween spirit and then have Halloween the following week.
There you go. That works.
There we go.
Very good.
That's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Yolanda. Makita.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. So last Saturday was an incredible day for arts in Ashland. So.
It was.
Porch Fest was amazing. I got a chance to take in a performance or two there. And then of course, the Stone Park Music Festival, second year. And, and Mr. Chair, I believe you were there as well. I, you know, I don't want to take it any further.
Love classical music.
But yeah, it was just incredible performers and, and an interesting range this year too. We had some more of the traditional classical performing, but we also had something a little bit closer to, I would say folk with the solo guitarist that was there and closed the show. Just again, and of course, the, the youth contest, beautifully done. Thank you so much for such a great community event on both fronts. Ash Hop and, and Stone, Stone Park Music Festival. Can't wait until next year. I also had a chance to attend the Historical Commission Meeting. So looking forward to working with that group and a couple of other things. I do know that they've got some, some things planned for Ashland Day. I won't say anything about Ashland Day. So you could go ahead. But, but it's, it's going to be a very exciting couple of few weeks. But it's going to be a very exciting couple of few weeks here in Ashland. Folks, I encourage folks to check out various community calendars and outlets to plan your weekends accordingly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Claudia?
Thank you. Yeah, we have the Dragonfly Street Fair coming up, right? And I'm going to let Brandy talk about, because she's been doing a yeoman's work for Ashland Day, so I'm going to let her talk about that. I do want to mention that we did have a school building, Mindus School Building Committee meeting last night. And that, you know, Mindus received an award in the American School and University, Universities Educational Interiors Showcase. They received a special citation for the design of commons, the common spaces. There's a, I do have a nice, some photos and that, but I should, I wasn't prepared. I should have gotten them to somebody so they could have gone up on the screen. But in any case, too late for that. But, you know, the really nice thing is that those spaces, the common spaces at Mindus, were really designed intentionally. And in part, I think that one might be able to say that they were inspired by the neighbor, the multi-age program that existed at the school for, I don't know, probably about 20 years. And so, and all the time that students spent with other age groups and that, and were inspired this, these spaces to a great extent. So congratulations to that. Good news is there's still a lot of work to be done on the fields there, but they hope to be usable by the spring. You know, I just wanted to add that just Mr. Kendall is, you know, he's been working with this group very closely for many years. I'm talking about the people overseeing the project, the builders and that. And so he has a relationship with them. And sometimes, you know, when we have a relationship, then we become less able to, I think, really navigate and being really the force for the community, right? Making sure that we get what we deserve. And he does such a remarkable job. You know, if you know Paul, you probably know he's not worried about, in general, offending anyone greatly. He does what's right and what he knows is right, and he speaks to it. And he does that masterfully, and it's been important for that building, any project that size, right? There's always something that needs some work or whatever, and he's just done that in a masterful way. So I just can't even state that enough. I did want to mention that on September 30th, the ZBA meeting is going to be with the EPA and DEP, both, Michael, I believe, right? Representatives in particular to talk about the 40B project that's going to be on 10 to 60 Main, that will be on top of the Plume. It's important, a couple of things here. You should get your questions in, I think, to Jasmine. You have to maybe look on the website. Maybe we should put a link on the front of the website. It's supposed to, we're supposed to have them in by this Friday. I kind of take exception to that because I really feel as though it should go into your newsletter, Michael, and people should have the opportunity to see the newsletter, that there's questions being accepted, and then be able to, you know, get them to Jasmine, who will then share them with whomever. And the other thing, too, I think it would be nice to have some of those questions posted because, as we all know, that often one person has thoughts or comments, and it makes us think about something else that we might have a question regarding. So I'd like to see those questions posted and the opportunity for people to read them and say, oh, yeah, I was going to ask that. I won't, but, oh, listen, that makes me think about this. This is just such an important, you know, something so important is happening in our community on so many levels that I just think we really need to take some time and give it the priority that I believe it deserves. I know that, you know, we had also asked about a balloon test. I think Mr. Angler was the one who brought that up way back at the beginning of this process in the late winter. And so I think, you know, I'm ready to go out and see how high I can get a helium balloon. You know, I can make quite a scene with a helium balloon. But I just think it's, it needs to be done. And then, you know, let's see if there was one. Oh, it was also suggested that maybe we have a whole town meeting and talk about the 40B projects that the town are faced with. Then, you know, I kind of thought that was a pretty good idea, that maybe this is something that we have a special meeting and and give the town the opportunity to. Listen, we all know that people's lives are very, very busy. And, you know, we feel like we know a fair amount of what's going on in town. And so sometimes you forget that there's so many people out there that don't know very much at all. And do they own, do they own some responsibility in the matter? Of course they do. But regardless, I feel as though we just, we need to make some extra effort on things that are going to have such an impact on the town.
You know, Claudia, we did that once before on another matter that was quite important to the town. And needless to say, that was very beneficial for those people who weren't able to make many of the meetings and stuff, so.
It's hard to keep up with it, right?
No, it is. It is. Everyone has their own, their own times and agendas and things they need to do. So having that type of meeting was very helpful at that time.
So maybe, maybe that's something we should consider, Michael. And, you know, as well as, like I said, the question date thing is crazy in my mind.
Yeah. If I just could say, I think Claudia, one of the things that we have talked about is just, I think, very similarly, just having like another education piece and just kind of about what 40B is in general, and then what it is for the town. Like, you know, what we're facing in terms of specific 40B projects as well. So the general aspects of 40B as well as the specific aspects.
I would say, especially because people still think of, they still tie 40B and.
Affordable housing.
Well, 40B is related to affordable housing, but the MWR TA zoning and things like that. People still bring that up of, well, what about this? I'm like, yeah, that's not the same thing.
Yeah, you mean the MBTA housing.
MBTA, sorry, MBTA.
I think there's some value, and looping back, I do remember after we had discussion, Michael, I think I said something, Claudia said something, I think we all talked about getting some education out there, and you sent out, I thought, was a very helpful document. But I do, I do want to say that I do agree that there may be some value in a public forum. And it sounds like you've done that before, just almost like a little teach-in and like a Q and A. Like, what does this mean? How does this work? How is this impacting Ashland? So that folks who can, who can make it can hear that information. And hopefully, we could even record it or whatever and disseminate that across the university. Because I think it would be an incredible, an interactive educational opportunity on this.
Well, it'd be nice to.
I think very effective.
And I don't disagree, but I would also like to see a state representative, you know, from the State House come.
I don't, I don't, I personally don't see the benefit of someone from the state coming here.
Well.
Because.
They can hear our voices, you know?
I just think it would, that people will then get so concerned about trying to get the state to change things, and that's not going to happen between now and when we have these projects that we have to review.
At least they'll have an idea.
I think it's, I think, to Claudia's point, an educational session that is in a space where people feel comfortable coming, that we record, that we do via Zoom, and that we do via live. It was brought up, someone, that we did one at the community center.
Yes.
A couple of different ones. We did one there when we were doing the Valentine Project, the initial thing. And then there was another one. So that may be something, again, that we want to do. The only thing that we all know is, when do you do that? What, what do you pick? What date, what time? That we can get to as many people as possible.
Well, and I think, I think, you know, to that point, like if we're going to do that, we need to plan a date sooner rather than later, even if we put it out there for, say, you know, I don't think anything is probably going to, you know, I mean, it's another month until we have our next meeting. So, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we can talk about a potential date. Or, you know, maybe we can think about that and see if we can.
Finalize a date by then.
Finalize a date.
I like that better.
Maybe, maybe like early November, I'm thinking, like before Thanksgiving.
I'm willing to help facilitate, so I can maybe work with Michael or Claudia, you know, I want to work with Michael.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
You know, find a date and see what we can pull together.
And I think we could probably, we could probably pull together a presentation on our own.
Oh, yeah.
Like, I think, I think we have enough information at this point.
I think it's more checking with Michael in regards to date of other meetings and things like that. Not necessarily Michael having to do the work, yep.
I just ask that, you know, just whatever we decide to do, we should make sure that the forum, that people are comfortable asking, make sure that we make sure that people feel comfortable asking questions. I think there are a lot of folks who might not feel, even if, like, you know, people submit questions in advance if they don't want to, you know, whatever. But anyway, we should, we should give people many avenues to participate so that they feel comfortable asking questions and getting the answers. Because I think a lot of people sort of may assume that they know or feel badly that they may not know as much as they do. So I just want to make sure that, that we maintain that kind of tone so that we're all like kind of learning and teaching together, so. That's the only thing.
And one thing I want to add, too, is just that, you know, I've learned a lot through these months of this, you know, these projects and that. And one thing is that how desperate we are in need of, and I think everybody can see that, but we are in desperate need for additional affordable housing in this state. And, you know, one quote I read, it was, you know, we can't think about housing for people who live here today. We have to think about housing for people who are going to live here in the future. And, and I think it's important that we, everybody understand that and hear that, and that this could help everybody learn that, too. I think, you know, some of the issues that we have in our community is, is, you know, how do you, do you help housing at what cost? At what cost is it to a community like ours to increase, you know, units by another 750 that would fall under the affordable category and another, beyond that, another 600 or 700? You know, I think it's important for people to have the information and.
Well, why don't we put it on our next agenda? Because this isn't an agenda item, so, well.
You're up next, Yolanda.
I'd just like to chime in a little bit on that. And I think, you know, my, so my concern right now is, I mean, we do have three very complicated 40B projects. I shouldn't say my concern, but, you know, and I want to make sure that our planning department is making, all two of them, is making sure that that process is going cleanly. And so nothing can kind of come back on the town from a procedural standpoint, which takes a lot. And also, our focus is also going to be on developing kind of the tri board meeting. But, you know, to the extent I think a public forum is meant and intended to be informative and genuinely meant to inform people about the projects and answer legitimate questions, I think we'll be happy to, to, you know, contribute to that to the best we can.
Don't disagree. The more information out there, the more educated people are, the better decisions can be made. You have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do have one other, one other item that I forgot to mention during my board report. Very quickly. So last time, we talked about us taking some committee assignments. And Susan was good enough to put together a spreadsheet for us to sign up and take those assignments. So we'll make sure, Yolanda and I will make sure that we distribute that. We want to try to finalize appointments as quickly as possible so that we can, you know, basically start leasing with our, with our boards and committees and making sure we kick off that process. So we'll make sure that a link gets out to y'all for that. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That was last, that's one question I don't have to ask now. Had it on my report.
And thank you for the reminder.
So thank you. Okay, Ms. Brandy.
Okay, so tomorrow night, we are meeting with our consultant for the last time, I believe, for the comprehensive plan. We are almost done, so we are in the final stages. I know Yolanda did yeoman's work trying to get all these forums up and going and the participation and all the feedback. So, you know, thank you to Yolanda, and it'll be good to have this ready-to-go to town meeting in November.
I just want to say, I didn't do it alone. I had some other board members here helping. And I do want to give a shout out to Michael Kyra because he did send them out to the school lists. And because of that, and I think I said this at our last meeting, that we had some people show up that were names that I wasn't familiar with, so. It was nice to work together collaboratively. Yeah, it was good.
That's awesome. That's good.
I also wanted you guys to be aware of something that was presented to the Board of Health last night. I haven't had a chance to watch the meeting, but I did hear about it through my Board of Health connection, AKA my husband. So there was a presentation done last night about what's called a nicotine-free generation. And they're looking to Ashland to adopt this. Basically, what it is, is it sets a date, like a birth date in time, that anyone born after that date will never be able to buy cigarettes in a particular town. So it phases out. So like people that are older than that date can always buy cigarettes. But basically, it's trying to phase out.
It's just cigarettes are all tobacco products?
All tobacco, all, yeah, sorry.
Just wanted clarification.
Yep, 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 yep. All nicotine products, so. Except for, I think nicotine gum doesn't fall into that whole thing, but, but anyway. But it's just something that I just wanted to make sure was on your radars. I don't have a ton of information. Again, I didn't watch the meeting. But I would hope that, you know, whatever process the Board of Health kind of goes through to vet this, you know, I would say we should be a part of that as well.
My only concern with that is, yes, I agree, you know, we don't want people to smoke. And as you said, over a certain age, you'll always be able to buy cigarettes. But I would think that if they decide to do that, they're going to want to monitor what's going on in other communities. Because if other communities right next door don't do that, then the people after a certain age will just go to another community to buy their cigarettes. It's just something to think about.
Yep, yep. So, anyway.
It has to be a regional, almost, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, again, I ask, well, just to be aware. And then, as Claudia kind of talked about, we've been working on Ashland Day. And our next meeting will actually be after Ashland Day because we are two weeks from, two weeks from Saturday, October 4th is what we are, what we are planning for. Hopefully, yeah.
Sounds like it's here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's here. It's real. But, so just to kind of give you guys an idea, we've been busy registering booths. We have about 75 booths registered for Ashland Day. We have a full day of performances, both music and dance and other demonstrations. We have, I think it's five bouncy houses, I think, is what we're. Five bouncy houses, a petting zoo. We do have the petting zoo, a face painter, lots of other, you know, some, a couple of the groups are going to do some face painting, too. I'm talking, yeah, so my whole idea about a pie in the face thing has really kind of like died a little bit of a painful death. Nobody is excited. Literally, I sent out an email to, to, like, you know, boards and all this email about, like, you know, potentially doing that. I got one email back that basically said, yep, nope.
A lot of pies, Brandy.
I'm sorry?
I said, it could be a lot of pies.
It could be a lot of pies. So, so I think that might be a next year thing versus a this year thing.
Not a problem.
And Beth has offered us, I think she has a Plinko game, so I'm thinking Plinko might be the town, because we're looking for an activity for the town tent. So unless anybody else has any other suggestions, I'm going to go with easy, so. So unless anybody else has any other suggestions, I'm going to go with easy. So, yeah. But I will send out at some point a sign up with all the, to all the boards, and if people want to sign up for times for the table, that would be great, and we'll share it with a bunch of people.
Rumor has it that the Historical Commission has something very fun in store, so.
Oh.
Good.
More fun, more fun than Plinko, less fun than throwing a pie in the face.
Somewhere in the fun zone, but I can't really quantify where that will land in said fun zone.
Probably determines on what you're.
It may be fun, since someone may not be fun for another.
It's guaranteed fun.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's been involved in, in helping us. It's, it takes a village, and we've got a pretty darn good ones.
I have to say, I am excited about the number of food varieties that are going to be there.
Yes.
I was looking at the list today, and I'm like, okay, I'm not going to eat for a whole week before.
We do, we have.
Try a little bit of everything.
Little bit of everything. In fact.
I might be too busy to eat.
I might be too busy to eat. That's, that's very possible.
That's where, that's when you get a volunteer that goes around and asks people what they want, and then they go get it.
So, yeah, and to that point, we are looking for a golf cart out there.
I saw that. What happened to the one from Kitty Fenwell?
It died at Kitty Fenwell. It died there. So, yeah.
Michael, do you know if the Town Forest Committee, if theirs is fixed, they?
Oh.
I was just thinking, are you talking about, I mean, would a gator suffice?
Yeah, a gator would suffice.
EPD has.
I know it was in the shop a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if it's.
Ashland Police Department has a gator that.
They got a gator.
They have something like that. It's not a golf cart, but it's.
But if you're going to use it for trash, it definitely has a place in the back to put the bags in.
Oh, okay.
And it's a two-seater, so you have two people.
Do you have any connections down there, Joe?
I used to. Been 13 years, but yeah.
All right. Maybe we can see what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay. At least we have some options. So, okay. Thank you. That is it for me.
Well, good. Thank you. Couple of quick things. Like Makita said, it was a very great day Saturday. You had a lot of events going on. And someone made a comment to me while I was sitting at the classical concert at the gazebo at Stone Park. Why do you have to put so many great events on one day? You know, because, you know, people were rushing to get from one place to the other, and you really couldn't enjoy, you know, stay for the whole thing. Some people left early, and, you know, to go to Porch Fest. And unlike last year, when they had Porch Fest, they had an entertainment crew right on Summer Street, so they were going, you know, they were drowning out what was happening at the gazebo. So, but thankfully, this year, it was on the other side of Cherry Street, over the hill, so the pines were blocking that sound away. But, but it was, it was good. I went to a couple of the Porches. It was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. All I can say is it's like a tailgate, tailgate party. Everybody was tailgating, which was a great time. It was a great time had by all. I'd like to say thank you to Peter, comedian, who was the head of the Fenwell Car Show. They said it was the best ever that they've had. They said the weather brought over 500 cars in and out throughout the day. Phenomenal. Yep. And when I went at 10 o'clock to, like I did last year, to get my, get our papers and go, it was already done. Someone had already done it. So I don't know who it was from the town that did it, but it was already done. So, but that's okay, because I got to walk around and saw my goat, and I saw a good friend's Model T with the rumble seat.
There you go.
I'm just telling you. Okay. It was there. Because I think I would have given them that, that award for all the, for all the stuff that was given to me. But anyway, it was, it was a great time. They made a lot of money for the American Cancer Society. So good for them, and thank you, Peter, for running that. It was, it was a great day. I know the lines were out straight cooking and stuff, so they, they were awesome.
They sold out.
They did sell out. Okay. I wasn't doubting.
Sold out of hamburgers and hot dogs.
That's awesome. Yeah, well, it was a great day for it. You couldn't ask for a better day. And I did reach out to Hank Roche from Habitat for Your Manor to see when they plan on having volunteers come and work. I haven't heard back from him, but I'll, I'll keep continuing.
Because they've, they've had people there. I saw, drove by when you saw the people with their TJX shirts and stuff, so. And I've had one or two other groups ask me when they could, you know, how, how could they get involved?
Yeah, okay.
They're actually going to be at Ashland Day, so.
Oh, good. We can figure out that.
So maybe, maybe there's a way that they can incorporate.
Yeah, sign up sheet.
That information. Yeah.
Maybe a sign up sheet, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That might be a good thing.
Yeah, so if you have that contact, that's going to do the thing.
Maybe, maybe they can speak about it for a few minutes. We plug them into the schedule.
That's a good idea.
So whoever has the connection, or well, since you're working with them through Ashland Day, say, do you want to take a few minutes and talk about it as you sign up volunteers from the gazebo?
Okay.
We'll plug it into the schedule.
Not a bad idea. Not a bad idea. That's about all I have. We're working on the Halloween Parade and Party. It's going to be on the 30th this year at Mindus School, the new school. All set. Everything is ready to rock and roll, so we're good for that. The 24th is slated for the first Kid Night Out, which is a Friday night, so which is nice. So we definitely don't want to interfere with that special event in any way, shape, and form. So they were gracious enough to schedule us for the 30th, which is the day before Halloween. So that fits right into the whole aspect of everything, so which is, which is cool. So with that, I do have something that I have to read. And this is to go into executive session. When we go into executive session, we will not reconvene into general, a general meeting. So I asked for a motion to adjourn the regular session at this time and call the executive meeting to order. So the executive session is pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 6, "To Consider Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. At the conclusion of the executive session, the Board will not convene in open session."
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This has to be a voice vote.
Reeves, I.
Keegan, I.
Bennett, I.
Kinsman, I.
Miniani, I. Thank you. Good night, and enjoy this great weather that we have for the rest of the week. And don't forget, Oktoberfest this Saturday at Fishing Game.
So Oktoberfest, Dragonfly.
And Dragonfly, yeah.
Dragonfly, and we'll see you all on October 4th at Ashland Day.
That's right.